Board of Education meeting to order, pro-call please.
Start with Kathy McGrath.
Here.
John Dobbins.
Here.
Leo Thomas, Director.
Here.
Carrie Elbrenn, I am here. And Van Martenson.
Here.
I'll come in for John.
Thank you. Number one, consider approval of the agenda.
So.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. There are none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried. Number two, report from student representatives and student and staff recognition.
Hi, I'm Alex Hernandez, I am a junior. The activities I'm involved in, I'm in three sports, I'm in drama, and that's pretty much it. I'm, I don't have a job right now, to be honest, and I plan to go to college, and I'm not really sure what I'm doing yet.
Hi, I'm Maggie Searls, I'm a senior, and I'm involved in student council, drama, ego club, NHS, and track and cross-country. And outside school, I help on our family cranberry rush. And I'm planning on going to a four-year college, and I'm interested in possibly studying Spanish.
I'm Gillian Searls, and I'm a freshman. I am in basketball, ecology club, drama, band, and student council. And I volunteer at a retirement home in Nacoussau. And I, for future plans, I plan on going to a four-year college.
My name is Jenna Zabel, I'm a freshman. The activities I'm involved in are softball, student council, Skills USA, and drama club. I'm not involved in anything outside of school, and I plan on going to college for volunteering.
One of the school happenings that's happening this Friday is the drama play. It's at 7:30 on Friday, and there will be concessions, and it'll be a lot of fun.
Oh. And then we also have, Eco Club is preparing a holiday meal, which will be on December 10th. It's for high school students and staff. And the Eco Club members and a culinary class are preparing a bunch of the food for the meal.
A little update on our volleyball season, all the girls worked really hard and grew as a team, and had a lot of fun. And although varsity was, didn't have many wins, JV was pretty successful, and I know everyone's looking forward to next season.
An update on the blood jar. We have 11 whole blood formations and one dual reformation. And student council helped set up and prop the whole deal. And for Fall Fest, all student council members, not all of them, but everyone signed up, they worked their games, and all the kids enjoyed it, had fun. And for the candy corn contest, E&amp;B won it.
How many candy corns?
There was 181, he guessed 450.
An update on football, we were six and three overall, and we were five and one in conference. We were co-conference champs, we made the playoffs for the first time in five years. We had 12 all-conference players, and Elijah Bristol was the defensive player of the year. And we're really looking forward to next year.
And then a cross-country update, there's 15 total people on the team this year, including four people from Port. And everyone improved their times this year by at least a minute, which was a really big accomplishment. And Derek Coats got second-team all-conference at conference. And we have six seniors that are, that were losing this year, but we're looking forward to next season, and.
We had Day of Caring on October 26th. We rigged 12 local logs, and I know everyone really appreciated it, and student council had a lot of fun.
And then, also another thing, NHS had a, this past Saturday had a, helped unload boxes in preparation for the Christmas Bazaar, which is a fundraiser for the Humane Society. So, we are glad to be able to be a part of that and help that. That's it, thanks.
Lot of good information.
Very proud of all of you, good workers.
Nice job.
Lots of volunteering plus other things, you're busy.
You're all welcome to stay if you would like. If not, you can.
Pull some of my athletic practice and.
Any other?
Just one item that I just want to mention, because this is the first meeting since, we did have, and I think all of you know this, we had a retired staff member who has now, is now deceased. But she gifted $4.3 million, Dorothea Haryu, who taught kindergarten, fourth grade, and seventh and eighth grade from the mid-1950s to the late 1970s. And she gifted that money to the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point specifically to help with elementary teacher education, to support teachers going into elementary education, and kind of specifically toward rural schools, too. And so, the University of Wisconsin Stevens Point reached out to the school district, and we've certainly been happy to help with anything that we've can so far to do what we can to see that that gift to the university goes to good use. And Mrs. Miller and I attended the announcement on behalf of the school district for that award, or that gift to the university, I should say. So, just a former staff member that certainly the district can be proud of, has left the legacy of hopefully training really bright and upcoming teachers. So, just thought we should mention that.
Awesome.
Thank you. Next item is president's report, all board members are in attendance. And our next board meeting is December 11th. Do we want to set one for January?
Well, then you can do that at the end of the meeting when it's set future event.
Yeah, we can do that.
Yep. The established future board meeting system.
Number four, administrative reports. A inclement weather plans, we're pending.
Well, it's getting to be that time of year where we talk about our inclement weather plans. We're well-practiced after last year. Hopefully, this year we have many fewer days than we had last year. Knocking on wood. Obviously, in making those decisions, we certainly consult with our bus company, we consult with the other local school districts, and try to make those decisions as early as possible, but not too early. Sometimes that can be tricky. We certainly want to allow parents time to plan and prepare for childcare or daycare if they need to. So, we do try to get it out as early as we can, but again, sometimes as early as we can is 6:00 a.m. in the morning. And, you know, there is no specific magic formula in terms of number of inches of snow. Certainly, for us, we're looking, you know, again, working with the bus company. If roads have been plowed by the county, by the village, by the other municipalities. If there's still forecast for more snow, how much snow, so we're looking at those things. The other piece is certainly the cold weather. This last year, we certainly had a spell of cold weather, and there we're looking at the wind chill warning. When we start to get into that warning territory, which is dipping below that 30 mile, or that 30 below with the wind chill. So, those are the things we're looking at. In terms of communicating, our primary source of communication is our instant alert through Infinite Campus, our student information system, that every year has to get tweaked as we do it, and it's because people change phone numbers and don't tell us, or, you know. And so, that as, as those alerts go out, oftentimes we'll have a whole bunch of people who'll be like, oh, I changed my phone number. And so, we do try to send that out, not only to our staff, but our students, our parents. And we do try, sometimes even my own phone will ring three times because of how I'm listed in Infinite Campus between staff and students. So, we do try to put that out, that's probably primary, the first wave of information. We do try to work with Ms. Christie, and probably this year as well, Ms. Schroeder, she'll, if you get to call some TV stations. But we do try to divide and conquer, and try to get the information out as soon as possible and as, in one sweep as possible, meaning within a short span of time, including our Facebook and social media accounts. Obviously, the next piece is, what do we do to make up that time? Last year was certainly an anomaly, and so we got really creative with making up time. We basically have two days kind of built into the calendar, the way it sits now, for the kids in terms of making up time. Staff makes up, is supposed to make up all that time, as they're contracted for that time. Students, again, we've built in a couple of days. We do have a little bit of wiggle room even beyond that if needed, as we ended up playing with that time last year. So, the other thing we did in our calendar this year, we end on a Wednesday, which would allow us a couple of days at the end of the week, a Thursday and a Friday at the end of our calendar if we had to make up time, without getting into the next week immediately for one day. Again, knocking on wood that we're not in that position again, so. We can even cancel school from the school board convention in Milwaukee if we have to, we've done that once, and hopefully, again, knocking on wood we're not doing that again, so. Now, if you have any questions on that, but that's, that's kind of the process and the procedure, and, you know, I just, I guess I encourage everybody, safe driving to school and to work in the mornings, and watch out for the flashing lights of the school bus.
All right, next item is report on elementary school activity, Principal Christie.
Last week we had our elementary parent-teacher conferences. At the back-to-school night, we have parents sign up, we have sign-up sheets so they can pick their time slot, and little reminder cards. We started this a couple of years ago, so they can pick their time slot, sign up, little reminder card. Then we contact any parents who did not sign up to get them a time slot with one of the ones under our leftover. We do reminders of those time slots, so on and so forth. And obviously, what all those reminders helped because we had, out of, we had only seven students who did not have, that were not represented at a conference. We had a 96% turnout. And of those seven, over half of them did eventually meet with the teacher, one just did today. So, it's a pretty good, pretty good turnout rate. In addition, we are, we have just started our best screener, which is our behavior, emotional, social trait screeners that the teachers actually do about the students. And that gives us data and information about some of our social-emotional issues our kids might be dealing with. In addition, our counselor Heather Lizinta started some small groups. She had teachers kind of write in as to some issues that some kids might want to talk about, work through, so on and so forth, outside of academics, and then contacted the parents and started some small groups. So, she has a friendship group, a super self group that emphasizes positive self-image, a girl power group about girl bullying, personal strengths, stopping rumors spreading, children in change, which is about family changes, dealing with different family situations, and self-regulators, which is identifying and expressing emotions appropriately, how to know the difference between what's a big deal and a little deal, and how to, you know, stop those emotions before, before they boil over, kind of those self-regulation skills. So, we've been busy.
Thank you. Next item was report on teacher recognition and Ecology Club holiday meal, Principal Schroeder.
I can't believe Maggie didn't tell you about cranberries, because I'm going to. So, the holiday meal is in the works. Jeannie Brunner with Ecology Club sets it up, and I was interviewing her, having a discussion with her, and asked her where it started. And she said, years ago, she heard kids in the halls say they didn't celebrate, or their family didn't have like a dinner, and she thought, wow, these kids need to experience this. So, she likes to call it our table. She's hoping that while she does this, she creates a community within the school district, or the school, while we sit around lunch, or the lunch table with no phones, no, you know, and just each other. So, she said they've been doing it the past three years, and last year is my first year I joined them, and I was just kind of amazed. The Ecology Club makes the homemade meal from scratch, which doesn't always even happen in our lunch anymore because of regulations and time and everything. So, it's served entirely by the high school students that are on the Ecology Club. Stack, all the students in high school are involved, and she, her dream is to have the middle school, but, I mean, it's a lot right now. Entire staff, the high, or both staff, middle school and high school she serves, school board she's inviting, and peep around these decorated tables, with Christmas trees, holiday music, the whole shebang. To make this dinner, I didn't realize this, they have over 200 pounds of turkey, 100 pounds of potatoes. Donated, they have 50 pounds of squash from a local farmer. Bags and bags of cranberries have been donated by our connections. And then she tries to involve any other clubs that she can. Skills USA went last Saturday picking apples, and now Ms. Robisky's face culinary students are going to make the apple pies. So, I guess, when I dug in, you know, they're renting tables and chairs and everything. So, I appreciate all the hard work they've put forth, hours and hours of preparation, I can't even believe it. I mean, I think it's a big deal to make a meal at my house for 10. She's making a meal for 175, can think about that stress. So, congratulations ahead of time to the Ecology Club. She's officially inviting all the board members, our IM tonight, on December 10th at 12 o'clock. So, I hope you can take a hour out of your day to come, come see it if you haven't. And it is, it's truly a good meal, so.
I was there the first year, it was absolutely awesome.
And so, the night before, we need, everybody's asking for another gym because she needs the gym to decorate, and they have practice and games, and the janitors have to turn around and take down from concert, I mean, it's incredible what happens behind the scenes to make all that happen. So, my other congratulation or my little celebration is, I don't know if you know this, and I went in and bragged to the kids how lucky they are to have our new teacher, Mr. Vanderhayde. He was a student teacher last year with UW Stevens Point, and I didn't even know this till he was on his way. They offered, or they wanted to present him with an award at the English Conference in Madison a couple of months ago. He asked off for the day, and I'm like, where are you going already? And he, they paid for him to be put up in a hotel and be at the conference, which, you know, he was, it was so valuable. And they gave him an award, he was student teacher of the year last year when he was at Stevens Point. So, he was nominated by all the professors and his cooperating teacher through the whole UW system, and they gave a speech at the luncheon for him. And then I asked him, like, what's some criteria, and he said, three of the points that they brought up was, he had strong relationships with his students when he was teaching, experimenting with creative writing pieces with the English writers, and using diverse texts in the curriculum to promote multicultural events. So, those were the three things that they bragged about, and so I told the kids how lucky we are to have him. And he's really making, you know, it's a couple of months in, and new teachers usually kind of get challenged, but he's making a lot of good connections. So, hats off to him, I guess.
Lucky to get, show us progress.
Thank you. Next item is questions and comments from people in attendance. See that no one signed up to address the board, did anyone like to address the board? Changed their mind? Moving on to the consent agenda. Number six, consider approval of minutes of the past meeting, October 9th and October 28th, 2019. Second. Question by Leo, second by Ben. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Number seven, consider approval of financial reports. Do we have any gifts?
Yes, we do. The first one is an anonymous gift of $1,762 for cross, cross-country uniforms. That was an anonymous donation. We also continue to get that anonymous donation weekly, so this month I'm reporting donation of $210. That will go into the family, helping families. The class of 69 was here this summer and did a tour, and we have received a couple of donations from them totaling $80. And they also donated some towels and stuff into the counseling office for, obviously, students are that would, you know, in need of those. So, that was very nice of them, and that, as well as going into the family, helping families. The Nacoussau Port Edwards Knights of Columbus in the past has donated like winter clothing, but this year they donated $170 to help us purchase things for students that are in need, so again, that'll go in our family, helping families. And then, there's a donation from the Port Edwards Parent Organization over here in the elementary school. Jenny is here, and she can maybe talk about it, but it's for Tina McLaughlin, is doing a, she's trying to beat the Guinness Book of World Records tomorrow with stacking cups. And so, the people helped her purchase these stacking cups, $200 to that. And so, tomorrow, want to stop by, both schools, they'll have that going on, in the morning at the, our building, and then in the afternoon over here. So, that is what I have for today.
Is it a time being in place, or what?
I'm not sure, Ms. Christie Pike, can you know more about this?
I don't know how they're breaking the record, that part I don't know.
Yeah, there's, yeah, so many seconds, and I saw, I saw the, I saw the cups, they're not just like a red sole cup, they're bigger, and they're white, but I don't know. I don't know either, but.
We'd like to.
Are you going to video it?
I'm sure there will be.
I'm sure there will be, yes, I'm sure, yeah. We'll have to get on social media.
There's probably some social media in there. There's two gifts that I'm going to kind of preview you for, for next month, that'll be formally on the agenda next month, that we've received in the last day. One of them, I just want to tell you that the Alexander, the members of the Alexander Foundation as individuals personally donated another $11,000 toward upgrades to the Dorothy Alexander Auditorium. We were facing doing a sound system in there by phases. So, the second donation is for, to pay part of phase two. Phase one was completed about a week ago, maybe two weeks ago now. And so, they've donated another $11,000 towards that, they donated 11 last year. That brings between them as, between the foundation and then the members of the board themselves personally, that brings donations toward the upgrades in the Alexander Auditorium to close to $66,000 over the last now four years. So, very thankful to see those donations coming in. The other one, maybe a little bit of a preview, and I'm not sure how much Jen Warren would like to maybe give away, and maybe say about two words on this, too, because I think it's, I think it's timely now, because the next board meeting will be full in the swing of things, so maybe you want to mention the other gift.
Sure, the Port Edwards Lions, I have a neighbor that's part of the Lions, and he contacted me and just asked if I would be willing to come in and talk about how Christmas cheer works, and so that's the program where teachers put names on a list for families that they know are struggling to make sure that they can have a Christmas. And it's all anonymous, and we kind of go through and finalize a list and then buy gifts. And so, the Lions used to be involved in that, and then they weren't for a couple of years, and they wanted to get back involved. So, Stacy Kleiken and I went and spoke about a month ago at one of their meetings, and just told them how it, how it ran. And after that, they decided that they did want to donate money to Christmas cheer, and so, originally, they had told us that they donate at least 1,000, and they said that they were going to take whatever the individual members donated, the club would match. And they came to us yesterday, I got a phone call from, from one of the guys, and he said, can we come and deliver the check? We'd like to take a picture, and, you know, sure, of course, and so they came, and, like I said originally, they told us at least 1,000, and so, it was $4,000 that they donated, so a pretty phenomenal amount, and it'll go a long way to, you know, giving those families that really don't have the money to buy Christmas presents and some of the other, and just necessities that they need for a home, that'll, you know, make a lot of people's Christmases, obviously, so we're just grateful to the Lions, look for doing that.
Very nice. Thank you.
It's the longest gift report we've had.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you have proven consent agenda.
All right.
That's fantastic.
With those gifts, I'd entertain a motion to approve of financial reports.
Second.
A motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. There is no unfinished business tonight, so we move on to new business. Number eight, consider approval of co-curricular positions.
We have a middle school girls' basketball coach, Angie Jacquetson, who's done some youth coaching, and JV girls' basketball. Mr. Barton, who's also certainly done different levels of coaching for us for years, so we ask your approval of those hires.
No second? Motion and a second? Discussion?
Just for curiosity, what are the numbers, do we have enough for JV and varsity, do we have numbers?
We're sitting between 10 and 12 right now, so not entirely sure that it's going to apply to have two teams or not.
I'll look and master them.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carried. Number nine, review of middle, high school violence drill.
So, Mrs. Schroeder will give you an update, this is the high school's report that we have to do. And again, you know, you just simply have to accept the report, and then we need a signed copy. And if you certainly have questions, you can ask. Did we do a vote last, I don't think we did a vote, you just heard the reports, you have questions, and then you just sign off that you've accepted.
This is what we got in our packet.
Yes.
Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't, that's okay.
It's a good refresher.
So, I guess the big change, you know, we used to have the Alice Drills like lockdown, and what are you going to do and plan and talk in the, in the room, and we're kind of going away from that. So, I met with our, Mr. Abbott, our SRO officer, and we came up with, because I read the whole booklet, you know, being new, the whole manual and the directions. So, we came up with the scenario and picked a place, in our school I picked, or we picked, the commons kind of in the, by the auditorium. And so, I went on the announcement and said, this is a drill, repeated, this is a drill. And, and I had emailed the teachers ahead of time, not where they were going to be or the situation, just that in the next day or two, we're going to have a drill. Because the whole idea is that they're supposed to think through this logically, like, you know, they're not going to know what's really happening and decide what to do. So, I went on the PA, said where the drill was, obviously, it was in the cafeteria by the gym, so they had to decide their location and where the students were and where they were going to exit. So, they were supposed to either stay in and lock down if it was close, and if they were far enough away and could get out, they would go out. So, obviously, we didn't go to our safety place, but I told them, like a fire drill, go outside and sit with your students, make sure you have them all accounted for, you know, and you'd be calming them or moving or whatever. So, then while that happened, both officers, Officer Abbott and Drew came in with Kyle's assistants. We walked through the school and checked on, were they supposed to, should have they left, were they there, were they gone, were they? So, we, you know, skipped through the school, and everybody had a plan of action. So, the ones close, you know, might have stayed in, the ones with multiple doors, like Mr. Bruno, he's got five exits, so he went to the farthest exit, you know, even though it was on his end of the building, got out. Everybody on the other side, you know, obviously, had three, four doors on that side, and were ready, you know, on the playground before we got there, because we checked the commons area first, so. Is a little, you know, everybody was a little bit nervous, and like I said, in a, in a real drill, or without a drill, and being real, we won't know where to go, and you've just got to make that decision, and the teachers just kept telling the kids, you need to be quiet, you need to listen. We need to come up with a plan, and we need to, you know, move. So, I think it really went well, a couple of them had, the new teachers had questions, and, you know, we'll keep debriefing, we debriefed. And one thing I made sure is that the substitutes knew, you know, where to go. We debriefed and, um, one thing I made sure is that the substitutes knew, you know, where to go and what to do, because it might happen, one of substitutes there. So, do you have any questions?
We just went through the Alice.
Well, we're still doing, and I wanted to clarify, we're still doing Alice.
Yes.
I think what Donna meant to say is, the way we had drilled it for the first couple of years of implementing it, we've now ramped up how we're drilling it. So we've kind of gone away from, it used to be more of talk out of scenarios with the kids. Now we're just being more active and about it, so, yeah. So Alice is still part of our plan.
I meant just the lockdown in the classrooms is what we only used to do and now we've changed that part of it.
Yep.
And very important that the subs know, because I, when I would, it was, yeah, it's, it's kind of frightening with your sub and you don't know exactly what's supposed to be going on, but if you read what the teacher has, there at least they're writing information out.
What was the, uh, thinking involving, not involving the fire department?
Um, the fire department isn't a first responder in this. They may be a responder.
Okay.
They're not, at this drill level, they're not a responder.
They're not a responder, okay.
The police to, you know, the way, in discussing this again with the new police, uh, department personnel. And it's very similar to the old police department personnel. This part of the drill is immediate action. Um, any police that are responding, and in Port Edward, hopefully, we were having an officer there just in a, within a couple of minutes. Uh, they're coming looking for, for...
The interlocutor.
The problem, they're coming looking for the problem. Um, and any officers responding are, they're gonna, they're gonna police court and off that scene. So to even have fire personnel even at that scene, may not happen until the police have cleared that scene. And fire personnel, where I would envision that is if we have injuries and other things, then when the police are satisfied that, that's taken, taking place.
Actually, this part of it, I copied from the big book.
Yeah.
So maybe I didn't even have to put that in there. I wanted to make it official and that's what Scott and, um...
But, but no, I mean, and that's something, the, the next, and Donna put some good points in here. The next piece is, we have to talk at a district level, reviewing again with the staff, um, what our reunification procedures are, where that happens, how it happens, our district communications. Um, and, and I think, too, with the police department and with the fire department, I think those are discussions we have to have on that, that level then is, where's the school district gonna need assistance? Because, you know, one of my concerns is, we go to a reunification site, um, people are gonna know where that site is once we get there. Um, are we gonna be flooded with, with parents and others? You know, my discussion with the police department is, at some level, some, at some level, we need assistance there, too. You know, if we get students to reunification site, we're gonna need police and/or other assistance there.
And one thing Scott Brandon did say, they pointed out, you know, they ran the whole drill with us, which was, was great. But they said to me, "Please know that if this is real, we're the first people to get here. We will not be at the other site." We, the local, you know...